I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 Papillion City Council meeting into order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have one presentation tonight. I can invite you up and I'll go ahead and read it. It's a proclamation for public works, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Papillion. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Papillion to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Papillion do by here proclaim May 19th of the 25th, 24 National Public Works Week. And the city of Papillion urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to the public works professionals. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Please. Want to share your words?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Department Heads, citizens, and guests. My name is Jennifer Raisler. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director here at the city of Papillion, but I'm also here tonight as President of the Nebraska Chapter of American Public Works Association. Each year in May, we celebrate National Public Works Week to recognize the men and women of public works and to educate the public on the importance of public works in their daily lives. The theme for Public Works Week this year is advancing quality of life for all, and I can think of no better way to sum up what public works does for our community. The people of public works proudly serve to ensure safe drinking water, improved roads, plowed streets, well-planned developments, free-flowing sanitary and storm sewers, and as we've witnessed recently with other communities, weather-related tragedies, emergency response, and recovery efforts. I hope you'll please join me this week especially to take a moment to thank a public works employee for their commitment to advancing, excuse me, advancing the quality of life here in Papillion. I hope you all have a happy Public Works Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Congratulations to Fire Chief Rob Gotch and Assistant Human Resources Director Jeremy Jensen. They both graduated last week from Leadership Sarpy. Chief Gotch's legacy group helped with the Sarpy County Museum to collect historical data on farming families within the county, and Jeremy's legacy group held a pickleball tournament to raise funds for the Papillion-Lavista Community School Foundation. So congratulations to both, and both have lasting legacies in our communities. So, thank you. And then as a part of our annual summer kickoff, the first free family date night at Sumter Amphitheater is this coming Saturday, May 18th. The family-friendly event starts at 7:30 PM with the concert with the String Beans, followed by the Princess Bride. And I guess that was last Saturday, so I hope if everybody had a chance to check that out. And then you each should have received an email from Deputy Administrator Mark Sturzma outlining the city's plan and our monitoring protocol and responsibilities when there are large rain and flood events like today's events. Please reach out to Mark if you have any additional questions about the information or about how we monitor it. We had eyes on it all day today and are ready to help clean up those trails when it's safe to do so. And then just a huge thank you to the Papio, Missouri NRD for their flood control measures and investments in recent years. Overall, Papillion fared well from today's high rainfalls, and the levees and redesive wars did their jobs like they were supposed to and how they were engineered to help protect both residential and commercial properties and lives. So again, thank you to the NRD. And then just a reminder that the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the grand opening ceremony is coming up. That's June 6th. The doors open at 9:00 AM and the ceremony begins at 11:00. And you should have all received your tickets, those of you that can attend. So if you haven't, please let me know and we'll make sure we get you those. And then just a reminder that City Hall will be closed this coming Monday, May 27th for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to prove the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. We have a couple of public hearings. First is Item E1, Ordinance 1975. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Section 205, 218-G, having to do with golf course fences. Applicants, Councilman Tom Mumgarth. I'll open the public hearing. I'll call for any proponents. And Mr. Mumgarth, you've got something.
Before we start, it's come to my attention that there needs to be additional discussion with affected property owners that live on the golf courses. So at the end of the public hearing, we'll hold the public hearing tonight, but at the end of the public hearing, I will make a motion to postpone conclusion of the public hearing so we can continue the public hearing until the first meeting in June and have additional discussion. And in the interim, I will meet with as many of the affected property owners as who have questions about the proposed ordinance.
We'll hold that motion to the end though, because we did publish for the public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And if there's anybody as a proponent that was here that wanted to speak, any opponents want to come forward and speak? Go ahead and come on up. And when you come up, if you just state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Sure. I'm Steve Dolzall. I live at 123 Oakmont Plaza in Eagle Hills, and I am opposed to the motion. I'm not, having read it, entirely convinced that I understand exactly what it's intended to do. My general position on the golf course fence issue, since I am a golf course lot owner, is that I do not think that it is our best interest to have our views obstructed, whether they're on our own or adjacent lots, and it doesn't make the golf course look particularly attractive from the golf course side. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I will. Let me comment to what you have to say. I think I agree with you 100%. I also live on a golf course, Terra Hills. I've been there for 32 years. I wrote the original "No Fence" on the golf course ordinance, and I've written all of the exceptions throughout the time. This is my attempt to clarify the rules as they apply to the zoning code, which up until about a year ago, I thought I understood it. And then I found that the zoning code said there was a difference between a quote "deck" attached to the house that had a roof or didn't have a roof. And I found that to be a stupid, silly distinction. So I'm trying to eliminate that distinction so those two kinds of decks are treated the same, and the fence rule stops at the back of the house. And the only time that fence could go out beyond the back of the house would be if that deck is actually a room, walls, roof, et cetera. And I'm willing to even consider saying, no, it can't go out that far even for the room. And I'm just trying to, it was a surprise to me about a year ago to find that I didn't even understand how the code applied to this situation. So I'm effectively going from, currently there are two situations where you can put a fence beyond the back of the house, and I'm going to the situation to correct that so there's only one situation when the deck, the fence could go in the back of the house. So, thank you for your comments.
I appreciate that because I was trying to figure out what the difference was and kind of went blind looking at the pictures.
And I would say to you or anybody else who's listening, the planning department has done a wonderful job on the ordinance because they have pictures, five different pictures of decks and rooms, which ones would allow the fence to be out to the back and which ones would stop the fence at the house. So take a look at that, and only one of those pictures would allow a fence any further back than the back of the house.
I spent quite a bit of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? Yes, welcome. Again, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Glenn Brudney. I live at 125 Long Drive. I've been a resident of Eagle Hills for, moved there in 2002 in April. I have a golf course lot. Love it. It's great. Not for fences there. I know this has come up before, and I thought that was kind of done with, you know, they would never allow fences. I didn't think the city would allow that because the golf course and the residential are kind of one whole part of the whole situation there. And it's really nice, not just because I live on a golf course, just the aesthetics and the beauty of it. Your backyard is part of the golf course, but you know, guys don't hit off your backyard, hopefully. It's just natural, and everybody takes care of their lots, and I just think a fence would just be just a boundary that would have no good for anybody, especially a city golf course. It's well-maintained, the looks, and a lot of golf courses you go to that were built a long time ago. Some ones the city of Omaha uses, they have chain link fences. That was back then. That was different. It changes things, the looks and things like that. It does stop from golfers going in your backyard or whatever happens. But I heard Mr. Mumgarth mention about having meetings. I think that's the greatest thing to talk about it so everybody gets clarification of what's going on instead of jumping to conclusions. So, appreciate that, and I just hope we have some good results for the Eagle Hill Golf Course residential property owners plus just the whole area. I think maybe we can come to some solution, hopefully no fences or no allowances. It seems like anytime you have covenants or you presume that there's no way this could happen, somebody always challenges it, digs deeper into it, and sometimes it's good to know this, so if it ever comes up again, there's been discussion about it. And I was on the Homeowners Association Board, the first board in Eagle Hills, and we had a, not difficult, but a trying time trying to sort through all the HOA rules and what is done, what's not allowed, and to work with the residents. And we got to that pretty well. There were some struggles at that time, and I guess you're always going to have something come up in that regard, and this is probably just one of them, which it's everybody tried to talk about it and clarify it. But just plain simple, I'm not for it.
Thank you.
For the good of the neighborhood, the city property, the golf course, and everything.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth?
Let me, you know, again, I'm on the same side as you because I've been there on a golf course for 32 years, and when I moved there, I was aware of the covenant, just like you, that says you can't have a fence in the backyard if you're on the golf course. I also realized that that covenant was too broad. It was kind of hard. I could see a lot of people finding exceptions and ways around it, and it's too hard to enforce covenants. So when I got on the city council, I wrote an ordinance that said, we're going to have the city say, you can't do this because it's the city golf course. And so that's how this ordinance came about. I have found over the years, however, my first ordinance was an absolute, no, you can't have it. And what we've found over the years, a lot of situations where that doesn't work. There's some lots on Eagle that are not subject to the exception because they're up on the cliff above the golf course. The swimming pool exception, that kind of thing. And to my surprise, a year ago, I found that there was also this exception for decks with a roof on it. And so I'm just trying to, one more time, I'm tired of dealing with it too, but one more time when we came up with the situation as described in the code wasn't fitting too well with the reality of what's out there. And so I'm going to work with you to try to get that straightened out.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Do we have any other opponents? Any, welcome.
My name's Carla Rue Piper, 812 Bailey Drive, Papillion, and I live in Western Hills. And I believe that there is a lot of confusion. I don't know whether I'm an opponent. I really am looking, and I did reach out both to Travis Gibbons, the Planning Director, today. I appreciate his time to spend with me to provide me with some clarifications on some points that I was frankly not clear about, although I've read that code about the golf course fences many, many times before, but he provided me with some additional clarification. I appreciate that, Travis. Thank you. I also met with Councilman Mumgarth today. He was gracious enough to meet with me, and we had a very pleasant conversation and just laid out some of potential concerns of Western Hills members, and I heard his perspectives as well. And I offered that maybe we have an opportunity after this public hearing today to have continuation of the public hearing so that we can get those affected neighborhoods in a place where they have a chance to be heard, and likewise, they can hear the city's perspectives. So I'm hoping that this council will agree to that continuation of the public hearing. So, thank you again to Councilman Mumgarth in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents or neutral? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Pam Mertz. I live at 323 Castle Pine Circle, and I think my biggest questions on the proposal is why for the change? Because if it's for dog runs, as a golfer and as somebody that lives on the golf course, having a dog let out in a fence to bark at golfers, which they will, is going to be a nuisance to any golfers on the golf course, plus to their neighbors. And I've lived in Eagle Hills for 21 years, and it's always been no fences, except if you have a pool, and it's the exception of the bluff lots. And so I feel like the back border of what is considered the back of a house isn't even relevant to what we're upset about because we just, because of aesthetics of our golf course, we want our Papillion-Eagle Hills Golf Course to maintain its beauty and its desirability to golf on it, and that's basically where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? See none? Mr. Mumgarth, did you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone the conclusion of the public hearing until the first meeting in June.
So a motion by Mr. Mumgarth, second by Mr. Fanslow? Oh, Mr. Stube. All right. Any council discussion?
Can I?
Mr. Fanslow.
Yep. So can I ask Travis a question? So Travis, can you explain what kind of fence is allowed? I think there is maybe some confusion on what's allowed and what has been interpreted in the past. So can you just clarify that for us?
Sure. I can give you a kind of a brief history of time, apparently, from what I've gathered with this ordinance.
And I just want everybody to be clear.
Yeah. So currently, right now, the golf course fences are not permitted behind the rear line of the home up against the golf course, unless you have a swimming pool or some type of a large enough hot tub in that matter that requires by law, building codes, you have to have a fence around that water structure. Then it's capped at a six-foot-high fence. It has to be a rod iron type of fence where it's see-through, you can't be a board-on-board type of fence. The other instance where you can have a fence is at Eagle Hills where there's the bluff lots is what it's called, and that's for safety reasons so people can't fall off that edge. Currently, though, the way the ordinance is written, the golf course fence amendment or the golf course fence section of code, is that fences are allowed on the side yards. So what that means is from the front building line of the home to the rear building line of the home, the section on the sides, you technically could put a fence there. And for now, so if somebody wanted to build a fence on the side yards within those confines, the zoning code would allow that. Over the years, it's been noted that there's been amendments, Mr. Mumgarth has mentioned that as well, where there's been multiple amendments to the ordinance. There's been obviously interpretations by my predecessors as well where they took a different interpretation of how that code read. So there's been situations where a deck extended out from the rear of the house, and that was used as the rear principal line of the building line. Then it changed to where it was a covered deck, then that was the building line. So there's been misinterpretations of code probably for 25, 30 years. So this code amendment, as it was presented by Councilman Mumgarth, was just to clarify and remove interpretations that have been made over the past 25, 30 years in order to clarify that those type of structures would not count unless they were part of the building, fully enclosed as part of the structure. So I hope that kind of clarified.
Yeah, so that's your professional opinion is that the past interpretations weren't accurate interpretations of the code?
Correct. And there have been, and as I stated, there's been, I believe, three different amendments where it tried to clarify those interpretations as well, but I think we're still at this situation here in 2024.
Does that answer your question?
It does, yes.
Okay. Any, you got another one?
Well, I'll just say before the vote, I'll vote for the extension because Councilman Mumgarth has some constituents that need more information. I have constituents, we all have them, who need some more questions answered, so I'm willing to participate and listen to what the concerns are again. I attended two neighborhood meetings since the last time we met, and I know what Eagle Hills folks, the majority of them, think about this ordinance. The Eagle Hills Villas Neighborhood, I know what they think about it, but I am willing to have more meetings, have more conversation, and just continue to listen to the people who might be affected by this.
Mr. Sunday?
Thank you. I have a question for Travis also. So how many, do you know how many residences have put up a fence under this, what you call a misinterpretation of what the ordinance says?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers on me, but we looked at, there were several properties brought up about two years ago to look at, roughly about 10 to 12 that we looked at, mainly in the Terra Golf Course region. So we looked at those.
So they did put up a fence or they did not?
There were fences that were erected. Either we tried to look for permit history back, all the way back to the mid-'90s. We looked at aerial photography to try to determine how they were built. A lot of instances you found, we found was either the permit was issued in error, maybe at some point in the past, or somebody made a different interpretation, or it was constructed illegally, but there were no records that we could find to actually, to allow these as a legal structure. So we've actually made determinations on a couple of lots that the fences are what we call non-conforming.
Okay. So assuming Mr. Mumgarth's motion passes, then would you go back? Would you intend to go back and have people remove what they've already constructed?
A lot of those from, we've looked at, again, from what we've seen, well, A, we are a, we are a compliance, we look at codes from complaints. So if there's complaints, we go and research the issues. At this point, I don't believe we would go and blanket, go back and try to find every fence that's what we consider illegal and tell them to move them. They would be deemed non-conforming. So at that point, you wouldn't be able to rebuild them in the same location if they were destroyed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion on the motion to postpone? If not, please vote, and a yes vote will keep the public hearing open and we'll continue it at the next council meeting. Motion passes, so all the comments that were made are part of the record, but then you are also welcome to come back next time and speak again because we're keeping the public hearing open. So thank you very much. Item E2, Ordinance 2022, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 subdivision of land, Article 4, plat review and submittal requirements of the Papillion Municipal Code having to do with preliminary plat supplemental materials as it relates to the Conference Plan Amendments to Adopt Stormwater Policies for the Papillion Creek and the southern Sarpy watersheds. It's a very timely public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Gosh, I miss seeing you guys every month. I'm sorry. My name's Mark Westergaard. I'm retired from E&amp;A Consulting. When I retired, MOBA asked me to become a part-time physician as what they call a joint agency liaison, and I'm here to talk to you tonight in that capacity, basically representing developers and builders. And this is the 11th hour for this, and I sincerely apologize for that. Most of our engineers, attorneys, builders, developers are pretty astute, and how this got through Planning Commission with no testimony whatsoever is kind of beyond me, and I apologize for that, certainly not the way we would have liked it to happen. I don't have any issue per se, or the industry doesn't have any issue per se with the requirement for the stream study. I think that's good. I think that gets everybody on the same page. There are a few things that I think it would behoove the council if they could delay this 30 days just to have a little bit more discussion on it. One, the staff report says there is no fiscal impact, and I really believe, the industry believes that there really is a fiscal impact of this compared to what is probably going to happen with your neighboring communities. And again, it is not consistent with what I believe the adoption will be in the neighboring communities, Bellevue, Omaha, maybe even Lavista. And then the other thing that I have some issues with is how a stream is defined. It's kind of a vague definition and very difficult. It's open to interpretation, and the concern in the industry is that, is how it will be determined by various people. So a stream is defined as it's listed as having a bed and bank, being two feet deep, and being a giving direction to a current of water nine months out of the year. That's a pretty vague definition. I mean, if it's a channel, does it take three months off and not give direction to water, or does it have to be wet, or does it not have to be wet for nine months? Kind of minute details, but they make a big difference because if it is classified as a stream, what goes into effect is what's called a three-to-one plus 50 feet on each side. So, and let me just give you an example. If there was a farmer that had a poorly maintained grass waterway and it became over two feet in depth, but it's still just a grassed waterway out in the middle of a field, what could happen would be, there would be a 110-foot-wide swath through that field that is not developable and that, in the industry's opinion, is really more than is necessary for that particular waterway. So... So those are some of the concerns we have, not necessarily with the stream survey itself, that is fine, but we would ask, the industry would ask, if you could entertain maybe delaying this 30 days, I think it would be appreciated, and I think it would be beneficial to all parties involved. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 2023, an ordinance to amend Chapter 206 Stormwater Management of the Papillion Municipal Code having to do with stormwater permitting and regulatory action as it relates to the adoption of stormwater policies, somewhat of a related item, but I'll open the public hearing. I'll assume the same comments carry over, but any other proponents or opponents or other comments? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Sunday.
Let me back up to the last one, E2. Do you need a motion to delay that out 30 days or?
I don't think so. If it's the, from the discussion, if I kind of, I mean, we could, but if the discussion kind of indicates that, I think we could just direct staff to have, continue to have the conversation. I'd say whatever you're comfortable with.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna ask the same question relative to extending it because obviously in the first case with, we're leaving the public hearing open, in this particular case, if we don't, does that mean the public hearing is closed?
We did close the public hearing, but that does not mean that staff can't, it doesn't mean that the third reading has to be on the next agenda. Staff could work with industry and then bring it back at third at that time.
Okay, well, I'd like to go back to the item two, maybe ask Mark a question from his standpoint, because what I'm reading in the synopsis here is that it says any depression two feet or more below the surrounding land which serves to give direction to a current of water at least nine months. I interpret that to mean that the water is flowing for nine months. In the potential for three months, it might not be flowing because it's frozen. So I would, I would look at that as being something that's, in my definition, it would be a stream. I'm not sure how staff would interpret that, but you believe that that's somewhat vague with regard to people interpreting it?
I would agree with your interpretation in that for there to be a current of water that is directed, there has to be water there.
Correct.
And so, yeah, and if that clarification was made, and if that was the interpretation that was done unilaterally, I, you know, we probably wouldn't have a huge issue with it, so. But those are the sorts of things that I think, it probably doesn't have to be real involved. I think, I think this could be resolved fairly quickly.
Okay. Well, obviously, I'll just make a comment that, you know, we're, I think, I'm very supportive of the development community because we can see what is down for the city of Papillion, so I would be receptive to extending this out as much as we can to make sure that the development community, and they might have been asleep at the wheel on this particular one, to give them a little bit more opportunity to review it and provide comment back to staff.
And I know the public hearing's over, but I, you know, you wanting to have the same criteria as South Serpents does, I get it, that makes some sense, but you are at a market disadvantage when Omaha is probably going to stay with the original criteria and probably Bellevue and probably La Vista. So, you know, two pieces of ground, one has a 40-foot-wide swath and one has 100, that's thousands of acre, hundreds of acres. It's a big deal.
Mr. Fenslow.
Yeah, I have a question too, thanks, Mayor. Mark, I don't, I think you said 12th hour, this is, you just found out about it. So tell me some, maybe Travis, what was the engagement with staff? Or Travis, I'll ask you, what was the engagement with the development community with this policy to get it this far?
Well, the Papillion RD is our technical partner, so they're the ones who laid the charge for that, they have the contract. We are a technical member of that, and we have a voting member. Myself, I go to the Papillion Creek Watershed Partnership meetings. Our city engineer also attends the Southern Serpents Watershed Partnership meetings, but the Papillion RD was the one who contracted with. They held outreach, open house meetings. They've had meetings with elected officials, open houses over the past, since January, the past six months. It's been a project that's been ongoing for over a year and a half, both the Papillion Creek Watershed Partnership and the Southern Serpents Watershed Partnership. It's been a multi-year process so far at this point. And what we are proposing in this act is we have the same language that the other partnership cities are adopting right now as well. They're in the same process that we are in, is doing comprehensive plan amendments or ordinance amendments as well.
Sure, okay.
That's where we're at.
Mark, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify that Papillion is in two separate watersheds. And so the rules in the West Papio watershed partnership are different than those in the South Serpents Watershed Partnership. And so we, because we're in both, we're adopting them at the same time, but that's how we differentiate those rules. So if you're in the West Papio, you're going to follow those rules just like everybody else in that watershed. If you're in the South Serpents watershed, south of the ridge line as we often refer to it, that's a different set of rules. That's where the 50-foot setback remains.
So I'll finish. I'm a little concerned that it got to here without maybe the development, and I don't know how the communication happened, but with the development community not really knowing that this was on the table. So I'm with Councilman Stube, I think we should lay it over for further conversations, and I don't know how long that's going to be.
Mr. Sunday, you'd mentioned that first. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Well, I wasn't going to make a motion.
Okay. Okay, you want, is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, at least that'll be real clear of what the intent is by having a motion.
And leave the public hearing open?
We can do that, reopen it, keep it open and carry it over.
Okay.
Okay. And got a second by Mr. Stube? Pardon? Yeah.
Can I handle them both in one motion? Or do I gotta go back?
Well, we're set on E2. I think if we, you can just do the same for E3.
In one motion or separate?
Okay. Just to keep it real clear on what the intent is, we'll go to E2. Motion is to keep the public hearing open and direct staff to have another conversation with industry, make sure we're on the same page, and take care of any clarifications. Is that right? Okay. And a part of the motion is reopening the public hearing? All right. So reopen the public hearing, carry it over, staff have a conversation with industry. That's the motion, that's the second. Any conversation on that? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
So now we're on to E3. I'd already closed the public hearing. I'm assuming then is it the same motion? To reopen the public hearing, carry the public hearing over, have staff have a conversation with industry. Okay. And that's the second?
Second.
All right. Yes.
I was only gonna say that, I was only gonna say that I don't make these decisions for MOBA myself. I have a really, kind of a blue chip committee that sits behind me of developers and engineers and really some very intelligent people. So that would be an excellent forum to discuss this with, with that committee. And I would, if you get in touch with me, I'll make that happen.
Thank you. Please vote. Another question?
Yeah, I just got a comment, and to me, it comes down to, and I think Mark kind of clarified a little bit with regard to, is that we have two different watersheds, and obviously, we've seen the effect today with regard to the Papio watershed, and I'm not sure that the Platt River watershed acts the same way as the Papillion Creek watershed. So to me, having ordinances on the books that the staff have to deal with that are essentially different, I think potentially creates some confusion, and so, you know, my thought would be is that they should be consistent. And so we've been operating under the Papio watershed for decades, and the potential is, I think we should look strongly at the Papillion, or excuse me, the Platt Riverside being operated somewhat the same. So hopefully, there will be some good discussion with the development community to look at that and make sure that we are addressing that, because again, I don't want to stifle development. We know that's going to open up significantly with the new sewer going in, and I don't want to stifle development, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes, thank you. Item F1, Ordinance 2021, an ordinance to amend 2023, 2024 salary ranges for management exempt positions. Is your motion to approve ordinance 2021? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Clu. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R240088, a resolution to approve an amendment to the application for license to sell permissible fireworks at retail submitted by Fraternal Order of Eagles for the summer 2024 selling season. Motion to approve Resolution R240088? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Fenslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R240089, resolution to approve an amendment to the application for license to sell permissible fireworks at retail submitted by Papillion La Vista Spirit Football for the summer 2024 selling season. Motion to approve Resolution R240089? Motion by Councilman Clu, second by Councilman Ingberg. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
F4, Resolution R240094, resolution to approve a revised memo of understanding between the city of Papillion and Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation, Inc. Is your motion to approve Resolution R240094? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, a little bit just for public awareness, well, Mr. Sunday, go ahead first. Oh, okay. I was just gonna say for public awareness, when the Vietnam Veterans Memorial first proposed a memorial, building a memorial, the city entered into a 50-year memo of understanding with them where we would donate, basically donate the land, they would raise the funds to build the memorial, and then once it was built, then we would kind of maintain it, and they would reimburse us a little bit. When that was signed, it was so early in the process, really, the scope of it was known conceptually, but once you get into the project, it really starts to self-define itself, and it took a little bit long enough, the costs went up, and that was their burden to raise those additional funds. And then, as we get to working together, of course, you understand the relationship a little bit more too, and the reimbursements and some of that stuff. But in the discussions, as Phase 1 was wrapping up, there was a lot of discussion from some of the foundations and some of the people involved in the memorial, that there might be a need for a second phase, not big, but a little bit of a building, they call it an education center, and the idea is just to have a little bit of an office for some onsite personnel, maybe some areas to display stuff, a little bit of a classroom. And some of the conversation that has started to occur, not commitments, but some of the conversations is, with the Vietnam War, people came home and put their stuff away and then never talked about it again. And now 50 years later, because of this memorial and the helicopter, people are starting to talk, conversations like, that Huey saved my life, and then you see these Vietnam vets starting to talk. And really, from a mental health perspective, you see a lot of conversations going. So the foundation's even contemplating a little bit, do they extend their mission a little bit to be mental health and PTSD? And if you want to have classrooms and education and stuff, you need a little bit of an education center. So the updated memo of understanding really is contemplating the potential for a Phase 2. And so as we start talking about a Phase 2, we had to differentiate what's Phase 1 and what's Phase 2. So a lot of clarification in it, but the biggest thing is identifying Phase 2. And then there was a little bit of nebulous language on ownership because they've raised money, built something, and it's sitting on city land, so this does clarify the actual structure above the ground, whose asset is that? Because that then becomes important to organizations that want to donate. They may not want to donate to the city, but they'll donate to a foundation. So a lot of clarity in there, but the bulk of it is to say the city is open to allowing them to go raise funds for a potential Phase 2. And it defines the scope of what Phase 2 is, the intent of Phase 2, but it also puts a time limit on it. If they haven't raised the money by a certain time, then Phase 2's not going to happen. So a lot of clarity around that. Mr. Sunday did that. Any other questions from that? Okay, you're welcome. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. And again, as Ms. Powers mentioned, ribbon cutting and public dedication of the memorial is June 6. F5, Resolution R240095, a resolution to approve financial policy FP1007 regarding capital asset control. Is your motion to approve Resolution R240095? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Mr. Mumgarth. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Sunday? Carry over. Yeah, that's right, that was for the previous. Okay. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes, all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, public facilities met. Ms. Clu.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, public facilities met tonight, took us about 56 minutes. We barely made it to this meeting, so lots of great discussion. We had two items that we talked. The first one was about Papillion landing and some concerns that staff has brought forward with decorum that's happening in the building and the way people are behaving. They had some thoughts on it, but the four council members generated more thoughts and have suggested that they go back and do a little bit more research, and actually Tracy and Matt brought that idea forward to us. So we will probably be asking to meet again with them in the fall at some point to really try to make sure that the landing becomes what so many of us dreamed about with having a good, respectful, wonderful spot where teens and adults can go and experience some great quality of life within the facilities provided by the city. The second item that we discussed was thoughts about when splash pads should actually open and close with respect to what's the day, what's the month? And what we kind of suggested is that, again, staff would probably be the best informed to do that, but we suggested also that extending those dates out might be more appropriate than what it was, say, 16 years ago when the first splash pad went in. Any issues that we used to have seem to have taken care of themselves, or the city has figured out ways to manage it a little bit better. And so we are going to task city staff to figure out more appropriate dates for making sure that those amenities are available as much as possible to our families to enjoy throughout the warmer months.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Council comments? Mr. Mumgarth?
Yes, every second year, the Terra Hills neighbors renew the mulching on the median of Shalali Boulevard, which is the entrance to Terra Hills and Terra Highlands, and that runs in front of the PLVD Fire Museum. We did that this past Saturday, and I wanted to just take a moment to thank Tony Gowen and his crew for bringing the mulch out there and leaving it there. They just bring it out and they leave it there. And I also want to thank his employee Jen, who spent several days, a few weeks ago, cleaning up the flowers and the plants along that median. It had gotten really bad. So I'll just take a moment to commend the Terra Hills homeowners for showing up this Saturday morning and working hard to spread that mulch out and beautify the street, the median there in the street, and saved Tony and his staff the time and effort of doing that. We'll do it again in two years, the mulch tends to last two years, and we'll do it again. And I would commend, I commend them, and I just point out, if anybody else, any other neighborhood associations in the city want to do something like that, I would encourage their council member to bring in a photo so we can see how hard, how they looked when they did it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other counsel? Last couple of weeks, off at Air Force Base, had 100th anniversary ceremony and also used it to kick off Police Week, so Chief Widded, Miss Andall, myself, Lieutenant Sharp, and Officer Bamer went out for that. It's part of, I think, not rebuilding, but making a stronger relationship with the base. It's part of, I think, not rebuilding, but making a stronger relationship with the base, realizing how many military, both active and retired, live in our community, want to make sure we got a strong relationship with the base. So we had that. Leadership Sarpy, as was mentioned, had a graduation. We had a couple people go through that, appreciate that. People are not aware, there were, there was a Papillion resident, a family that bought two buildings downtown. So again, we've got Papillion people reinvesting in downtown, which has always been one of our goals. So those buildings were bought in April, and they're working on cleaning and rehabbing them a little bit, and moving a new bit, relocating a business from outside Papillion into Papillion. So that was good to hear, and we met with them today to make sure they had open door to us as they, as they work on that building. We talked about the Vietnam Veteran Memorial. Hawkins Construction did formally complete construction and turned that over to the memorial on Friday, and they had a luncheon for all the subcontractors to tell them thank you for that. And so now the foundation itself is putting the finishing touches on the memorial, and then the public dedication will be June sixth. We have confirmed that the original, the entire original crew from that Huey helicopter is coming in, along with the gentleman who donated the Huey that lives in Virginia, or in Vermont, so he's coming in as well. So that'll be a pretty neat event. Just reminders on Memorial Day, there are two Papillion events for Memorial Day. One's at eleven thirty at the National Cemetery, and the other one's at, I think, one o'clock at post thirty-two. And then, a lot of people have been asking about Aldi's. That opens May twenty-third, so that's coming up. And then, May thirtieth, if you want to attend the Sarpy Chamber State of the County, let staff know, and we can get you registered for that. And then, there's several ribbon cuttings coming up, so watch your emails for those. Farmers markets are starting, and look at all the rain events and the stormwater management policy discussions we had. This is the sixtieth anniversary of the major floods downtown, where the theater and everything else was flooded, so timely to be talking about stormwater management. Any other council discussion? We do have a closed session tonight. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss litigation? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Cluick. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
I will state for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss litigation. The closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, deputy seat administrator, city clerk, city attorney, and the human resources director.